Hello and welcome to another edition of the Get Growing Weekly Work Session with Get Oiling. I'm Coach Ashley. Today, we are joined by founders of Get Oiling, Greg and Amanda Killline. Hey, guys.
Hello, hello. So glad you're here today.
We are. We also have Julie and Colin from our team joining us. What's up, you guys? Good to see you. Hey, all right. And for you who's joining us here today, let us know where in the world you are. We're excited to have you here with us today. We're going to be talking about the four core systems that run your young living business as a brand partner and how you can really kind of get a grasp on what those things are, feel really confident about how you run them so that you can crush it with your growth. Going into the new year, as we're filming this right now, it is December 1st of 2022. We are in full gear getting ready for the coming year and making it the best one yet. And we are so excited that you've taken time out of your busy schedule this time of year to spend it here with us and on growing yourself and your business. Hello from the Bronx. I'm in SI. What's up, New York City? Good to see you guys here. You guys get over here in the chat and let's learn more about each other. So for those of you who are brand new, if you've never been here before, welcome. We do host this live call every Thursday where there is not a national holiday here in the United States. And we are doing this for everyone in Team YL. You don't have to be a member of Get Oiling to benefit from what we share on these calls. What we'll typically do here is share some kind of useful bit of information that'll help you to grow your business or to get more out of what you're doing. And then, of course, we'll often share how you can use Get Oiling to take that even further, to save you time and to be more effective. And then, of course, if you choose to join us and be part of our community, we also have the ability to work together on live calls like this. So if you are here today and you're looking for one-on-one help or support, if you want more kind of visual hands-on help with something you're working on, we have space for that here today as we do every week. So yeah, excited to have you here. Hello, Arizona. Hello, Connecticut. So many great people popping in today. Nice to see you. All right. So what I'm going to do is we're going to pop out of a video here. I've got some slides prepared for you. Please do keep the chat going and we do have a Q and A that you can let yourself into as well. If you have questions that you would like for me or our team to answer, pretty please put those into that Q and A box. So we don't miss them because our chat can get a little lively. All right. So let's get into our slides I've prepared for you today and get this thing started. All right. So today we're going to learn about the four key systems that run your brand partner business. So what we'll go over today first is this bird's eye view of what an optimized brand partner business looks like. And we'll get into then what the four systems are that run that optimized brand partner business. Then we'll talk about how you can get your systems in order in your business without overwhelming yourself or feeling like you need to hit pause on everything to get it figured out. Does that sound good? Maybe let me know in the chat. Show me your hands. Does that sound like a good deal today? Let me know. We're excited to get into this with you. All right. And then, of course, as always, we have space for you for live help and Q and A. If you are working on something in your business that you need support with, let us know in the Q and A and we will work with you. All right. So again, had that head over there. We love to work with you on these live calls. And this is an ongoing opportunity for you to allow yourself to not be stuck on anything because you've got people here who have your back. And if you are watching this as a replay in the future, you can go to getoiling.com/weeklyworksession and always know when our next call is going to be, what we're going to be talking about and find opportunities to work together live. And if you would like to schedule that time specifically, just go over to getoiling.com/websitereview and you can have dedicated space on an upcoming live call, just like this one, to work together on anything it is that you are working on in your business. If it's something that might take a bit more time, we can plan for it and we can make sure that we really get into exactly what it is that you need to do. Take advantage of this. All right. So into today's training, there are four main systems, four, that run your brand partner business. You might also call them stages or pipelines. And if you've been around my training for long, or if you've been on our YouTube channel where you find that training, then you can see me at times call these stages or pipelines. But these are in effect systems where you have an input and you have an output. You start with this, it becomes another thing, right? So I'm curious if you guys in the chat would like to maybe give, give a guess here. What do you feel like those four systems might be? If there were four systems that run your brand partner business, what do you feel like they might be? What are some guesses? We got onboarding here as a guess. And do you remember here, you guys, we're kind of bird's eye viewing this. There are four main systems. That doesn't mean that systems can't have systems inside of them because they always do, right? Awesome. We got onboarding, we got contact manager. Who's got more guesses? You want to throw some more out? Keep them going over there in the chat. Prospecting. Excellent. Main systems for running your business. So as we're kind of filling out those guesses here in the machine of your business, what you think that is comprised of, and all of you are correct. Those are all parts of this moving machine, of this running machine that is your business. We want to make sure first, of course, if you aren't looking at it this way yet, think about your business as a machine, right? You might think of your business as you, and to a degree that is true. But what your business really is, is you plus, right? It is you plus Young Living. It's you plus Young Living plus Get Oiling, right? The tools that you use with Get Oiling to make things grow, right? So your business, like a machine, has an input and an output, right? Input of your business is the masses, right? It's all of the people in the world who could become your future customers and brand partners. And what the machine of your business does is it filters out the whole of the world that could see your business and it spits out on the other side, your people who love what you do and want to do it with you, right? Can we agree on this? This is what our business does. Our business is here to take anybody's and turn them into somebodies who love Young Living, who want to buy products every month and feel that sharing is such a no-brainer that they do it, right? That is the whole goal of our business, right? Our goal is to create a situation by which people want Young Living products and buy them with minimal follow-up and need to communicate with you, right? Because when they're happy customers, they're buying their stuff, they're buying lots of stuff. You're getting your residual overrides. They're happy, you're happy, your check grows and so on. And if we can get that duplicating, that's where this sort of magical business lives, right? That's the magic of this model that you have as a Young Living brand partner is that you can create scale in this. The sad reality, though, is that most of us, because we aren't working in systems, is that we create lots and lots of jobs for ourselves that we don't have enough hours in the day to work, right? All right. So we've got our input and we've got our output. That is our business. It is a machine that turns the masses into absolute raving fans of Young Living and you. All right. So here's an important thing that I want you to know before we go any further. You already have a machine in place. You have a business in place. You've got a customer. If you're a brand partner and you have gotten a customer, you have a machine. Now, it might not be fine-tuned with bells and whistles, right? And that's okay. We don't have to build something new. So please, when you're thinking through and looking at what I'm sharing with you today, I am not asking you, nor should you think you need to throw everything out, right? There's something that you're doing that's working. I think we just have to look at what you're doing from a slightly different perspective and then organize our thinking around systems so that we can work more effectively and get the results that we want, right? We agree on that? All right, let's go. So our goal today is to understand how we can optimally organize our machine and tweak it one system at a time to make it better, right? So if maybe, maybe you already have these different parts, these different system pieces that I'm going to be sharing with you in just a second. I'm curious if any of you guys got these right. We're going to be going over those in a second, but it's important for you to know you already have these things. You just might not be looking at them the right way, or they might not be spinning cogs in the wheel just yet, right? Okay, so let's take this business engine apart and look inside. Okay, so the four systems that run your brand partner business are first, your brand and exposure, then your lead to customer system, your customer to brand partner system, and your maintenance system, right? Just communication and maintenance. This is it. These are the four key areas. We're going to break these down here in just a second. How you show up, how the curious become customers, how customers become raving fans and sharing is obvious and they do it. And then how you perform basic maintenance activities to keep these other three running. Right? These are the four systems. Now, everything that you guys have put into the chat today is correct. They just fall into one of these four things. And it's important for you to know where those activities live so that you can make sure that you're focusing on them the right way, so that you know what the outcome should be and how much time you should spend on them and so on, right? So first, let's talk about this first system, your brand and exposure. How you get yourself out there to the world and what picture you're painting for the world so that they might know that you're someone worth listening to and getting in touch with, right? So this is how we take someone from stranger, the masses, to an interested lead. This begins with your brand message. This is understanding the who, like who you're here for, your why behind what you do and how you help that who. This also includes your website. So how your brand is expressed on your own website. Of course, you have that as a Get Oiling member. You have the ability to make a gorgeous professional website if you want to, or use our templates and look like somebody did it all for you for thousands and thousands of dollars. We also have our brand content. This is what serves our who. This is something that you have the ability to do with Get Oiling as well through creating blog content, public-facing content that people can discover so that they are aided in finding you credible, right? And understanding that you aren't just somebody who has a hobby of selling oils on social media, but somebody who has a business that helps a certain kind of person get a particular outcome, right? We build that trust through our brand content. And then we've got, and this is something that you probably are already doing, social engagement and then syndication, which just basically means sharing of your content, right? So if you wrote a blog post, you're letting the world know, hey, I created content over here. Or if you're a podcaster, then you let them know that you made a podcast episode and you go and you get that out to the world, right? And then, of course, generally speaking, this first system also includes how you get more people in front of you and your brand message. This can include things like in-person and virtual events. Really any opportunity to put you on a real or virtual sort of stage in front of people who could find what you have to say interesting so that they keep listening and then move on to this next system of your business, which is that lead to customer pipeline. This is what takes your people from interested lead to new Young Living customer, right? So your list of leads and how you nurture them is top here, right? Your list of leads and how you nurture them is a big part of how you move people from curious to customer, right? So there's a few things that go into this list of leads and how you nurture them. This could literally be you've written down a list of names of people that you know and you want to engage and look for opportunities to share Young Living or invite them to view a product or learn some information that might introduce them to a product, right? So your list can be that literal old school, I wrote down a list of names. Or if you've been following some of the trainings that we have here or the Get Leads course inside of Get Oiling, or maybe some course content from our partners, maybe you've got a funnel in place and you've been attracting people from elsewhere in the virtual world who have found you and decided that you're worth following. That's a list of leads as well. And of course, you do need to be staying in touch with them to be top of mind. This is all activity that is a part of this system, your lead to customer pipeline. This also includes how you invite people to share Young Living. So if you're inviting them to review information to a class, to a whatever, how you're inviting, how you're actually doing the sharing, how you're following up and how you close and enroll new customers, right? This is where we're taking somebody from, they were out in the world. That's our first system. They're just people out in the world, people in our life, people at the grocery store, people passing by, whatever, that they're at that first system, they get curious. And then they move to the system where that interested person can now move toward being a new customer. All right. Third system, our customer to brand partner pipeline. This is how we get people started, right? This is where duplication lives. This is where we go from new customer to fully bought-in. This is how you get your new customer started, right? How you help them find their hero product and fall in love with it as quickly as possible? The care calls that you should 100% be doing with these customers so that they could find that hero product and fall in love with it in that first 90 days? And then how you can help them see that Young Living is a no-brainer to share and start building a business with you? And then, of course, from there, how you go about helping them to enroll their first customers. Right? This is that third stage of our pipeline. How you get someone started is how you should get everyone started, right? And your goal of getting them started is not just getting one sale or just hoping that they stay on loyalty rewards. No. It's staying engaged with them so that they can really become enmeshed. They can buy into Young Living as a lifestyle and get one or two products that they could never imagine not using. And once you've done that, you've done most of your job as a brand partner, bringing a new customer in. Because once they're at that point that they've got products that they know they can't live without, sharing becomes obvious, right? So you just very simply help them to get new people started and to help them start sharing, right? Now finally, communication and maintenance. This is the final piece, the final system that I want to share with you here today. This is how you keep the right people engaged. Understand that you're never going to engage everyone all the time. That's true of anyone who has a following or an email list. You can send an email out to 10,000 people. And if a thousand people open it, you're doing all right. You know, obviously you want to have a lot more people engaged, as many as possible. But, but the fact is, is we want the right people right now, right? So this might mean that you've got specific customer content that you want to send out. Maybe you send out something once a week that maybe helps people to understand more about products. Maybe you've got some cool stuff from one of our content partners that educates on different products or body systems and ways that you can support them with Young Living. Maybe you've got Business Builder specific content that you want to send out. You've got maybe a monthly newsletter, which you should 100% be keeping simple by either literally having it be a simple thing that points to the Young Living website or working with one of our content partners and purchasing one of the pre-made pages or templates that they use that you can just simply plug into your Get Oiling system and send that link out to people so that they can check that out on their own. And then, of course, managing how your leveraged educational resources are shared. This would entail having your, your private member area set up for your customers with any kind of addition of new educational information on a monthly basis. If you're moving your groups off of Facebook and supporting them in your Get Oiling account. So that's basically what that looks like. All right. So 70% of your efforts and resources belong. Oh, I thought I had this circled here. It's these guys right here, right? So your brand exposure, lead to customer, customer to brand partner, these are where 70% plus of your efforts belong, right? If we can get these things right, your business can run itself. I'll repeat that. If we can get these things running right, your business runs itself. Because if we do these things right, we have duplication. And we have a fairly minimal effort, right? As opposed to a maximal effort that most of us are probably putting in because we're not using systems, right? We can, in the least amount of work possible, get the most benefit by focusing on these three things and putting 70% or more of the time we spend on our business, on putting ourselves out there the right way to get people curious, engaging with as many of those curious people as possible to get them started and then getting them started right so that they see that repeating this process is an obvious thing they ought to be doing, right? All right. Get Oiling can help you to turn this piece into less than 30% of your time spent, right? The maintenance stuff, you can get that done in honestly, an hour a month with Get Oiling. And you want to be spending the majority of your time on this other bigger piece, how you get found so that you can get new leads, right? New leads and then new customers and customers that are served right so that they see that they should be doing this with you, right? So question for you guys. Let me know in the chat. Where do you spend most of your time? Have you tracked your time? Do you ever, do you ever actually like kind of audit how you're spending your time on your business? Where does most of your time go? Are you, are you learning most of the time? Are you, are you reaching out to people? Are you in the DMs all the time? Are you hustling? Are you, are you focusing on building out a member area? What does that look like for you right now? So we've got, we're still learning the systems, got it, connecting with contacts, creating social content. Awesome, you guys. So really, the important thing here to know is which system you're working on when you're working, right? When you spend your working hours, you want to make sure you're aware. Are you aware of what system you're working on? Start today by asking yourself, when you sit down to do something, which of these systems am I supporting, right? And when you start spending a ton of time, let's say for instance, on that maintenance stuff and your check isn't where you want it to be. If you're just focusing on that final system, you might know why your check isn't growing because we're not putting enough time into those first three systems, right? So there's a solid chance that you aren't already operating your business with a clear focus on these four systems, which is okay. Because let's be real and maybe raise your hand if this is you. Most of this get in, most of us get into this business by total accident. I don't think most of us who are here today decided to go whole hog when they got Young Living oils for the first time and just start the business right away. That is a very, very rare red quality that most of us don't have. Most of us loved what we used enough that it just became obvious. Or when we learned that we could get our product paid for, right? Most of the time you get started with Young Living, you have no intention of growing the business. That means most of us get into this by accident and that's okay. But what we have to know is that when we don't operate intentionally, we wind up in a stressful pattern of reactivity in our business. And that reactivity pattern comes from two sources. One of them is not using systems and the other is compareitis. Like somebody else is doing something and maybe I should be doing what they're doing, which is a topic for another training, but wanted to make sure you know that those are the two things, all right? So if you're in reaction mode, when the first of the month gift with purchase is announced or a new sale is announced or a new product drops or the end of the month is near and you're like, whoa, I needed an OGV increase like yesterday. Let me go and track down all my people that I haven't talked to in three months and be like, hey, you're about to go inactive, right? If you are in reactive mode when these things happen, it might be a good time to get clear on your systems, right? But let's go ahead and call out the elephant in the room here. What if you are already trying to learn new things and you've, you know, you've signed up for 27 different things? And you've got courses and you're in all of this stuff and you're just strung in 15 different directions? And you're like, okay, well, um, cool that there are four systems, Coach Ashley. But yeah, I've, I've already got all this other stuff. Like what am I supposed to like? Wait, you want me to like do another thing? Is that you right now? I see you. I hear you. I see you. I see you. I see you. I hear you. And you also maybe know that you need to learn all the things and then do all the things. And you probably feel a little overwhelmed, right? Little bit? Yeah. So the key is to master one system at a time. One system at a time. And here's the cool thing. When you know what the system is and you know what's in the system, you could follow anybody's training and know what system it fits into, right? If you know what these four things are and you know how they work in your business, then you can go to Leslie Burris or Kristen Boss or Martha Crecci or right here on Thursdays or any of the other amazing places where you can get great training as a brand partner. And you're going to get it right because you know where to focus your efforts. You know where this fits in, right? The key is to know your systems. So you have to master one of them at a time. So who would like to know how to do this without being completely flippant overwhelmed in trying to learn something entirely new? Would that be amazing? Would that give you a fantastic start to your new year, right? Would that get you so prepared, feeling so comfortable going into the coming year? I'm seeing a whole lot of yes in the chat. All right, you guys. So what I want to share with you today is the Marketing Mastery Workshop Series. And before you go, oh God, it's another new thing. Don't worry. It is kind of, but, but it's not. And I'm going to show you why. So what this is, is a series of workshops that these are designed to help you master and launch each of these business systems, right? One at a time, okay? And what this does is it references existing materials you may already have access to. And if you don't, don't worry, we got you, all right? It references stuff that you can go deep dive into. You can schedule it. You don't have to do it by next week. We can set out at the beginning of the month and say, all right, we're working on system one this month, okay? And we're going to have a Q and A call and let's talk about the things that you need to know. And we're going to point you straight to where you can get that information. And you can build yourself a plan to master one of these systems at a time, all right? So if you want to get into references and deep dives, we're going to be able to point off to things that already exist. So you're not actually technically, especially if you've been in any of the courses and programs that I've launched with Get Oiling already. If you're already in them, you're going to love this. It's like your game plan blueprint to use all of them exactly as you need them right now. Wouldn't that be cool? All right. So you can plan and easily manage your business projects. Because a lot of this, let's get real, if you don't have a website yet, that's going to take you a little bit of time. You got to make one. If you don't have a member area for your people yet, hey, you might not need one yet. But when it's time, it's going to be a project, right? You got a little bit of this, little bit of that you got to do. We can make sure that you're putting your time where it needs to go, when it needs to go there so that you're serving the right system at the right time, okay? And you'll have support and guidance on how you can develop and run each of these systems effectively. And you can finally design a business that works for you holistically. Who loves that word holistic? I hope everyone here is in love with that word, right? Isn't that what these plants help us achieve, right? A holistic way of living and thriving in this world. We support our bodies that way. Why don't we support our business that way? Yes. So, um, all right, Sheri, that's a great question. I want to get into that with you here in just a bit. The, the, the short answer is, let's do this. If, if you've got time before the end of the year to work on Brand My Business Workshop, absolutely 100%, go ahead and do that. 100% go ahead and do that if you've got time. If you're putting off doing work because you've got a bit busy holiday season, you know, no shame in that. I would, this is going to be something that will allow you to continue doing things you're already doing, but to be more effective in how you're spending your time. And it's okay if you haven't finished, Allison. It's not about finishing these things. It's about focusing on the right systems to get those launched and use these things for, for getting that done, right? So let's get into a little bit more of the details. So this is open to all Get Oiling members. So if you are not a Get Oiling member yet, girl, GetOiling.com, you can get started for a dollar. Easy to implement, manageable steps. We're going to break this down. I'm not going to tell you to go do a whole course, but I might tell you to focus on this module of this course, right? Templates, courses, resources and secrets to help you put it all together with four live workshops on these core systems. And if you are brand new to Get Oiling and you have no idea where to start, this is going to be a really fun thing to do in the new year together. Lisa, what I would encourage you to do if you're just getting started is just to, just devote maybe, you know, 10, 15 minutes a day to learning your contact manager, sending messages to people you already know using it and giving yourself to-dos and just focusing on the contact manager. Get a little bit of that going and then first of the year, once we get this thing launched, you're going to get exactly what you need with support. And of course, we're here every week to help you. We will be doing this once a month. This, these live workshops are going to be once a month, starting in January 2023. We don't, we don't have our dates for you just yet, but don't worry. We will get that going soon and get those to you. You're going to get personalized recommendations. So if you show up, you're going to get what you need, right? We'll be able to say, all right, here's what you focus on first. Now, once you do that, come back. Let's talk about it. What do we need next, right? We can give a very specific holistic prescriptive set of actions for you based on where you are and the systems that you need in your business. But we will be focusing on one system. but we will be focusing on one system a month, one, you know, system group a month of these four things that I've, I've shared with you. And this will also include you guys, exclusive community with live support on these weekly calls of which you are on currently. So any of the questions that you have as we're going through this, you don't have to wait until the next month, right? We're gonna have our workshop on the system, we're gonna have our steps and, and discussions and everything on the system during that month, but anytime you have questions, of course, you'll be able to ask them in the community, but you can also come on to the live weekly work sessions that we have every Thursday, because this is available to anyone who is a customer, right? So if you are not with Get Oil-ing yet, get started now, you guys. This is, there is going to be a cutoff for being able to access this. You are going to need to be an active Get Oil-ing customer before this promotion ends. You can learn more about it on GetOil-ing.com. And if you want to really level up your game, you guys, when you go annual, and this does come with a 30-day money-back guarantee. If you get started with Get Oil-ing, for a 30-day money-back guarantee, you get your annual plan in place. You are not only going to get all of the amazing bonuses that you'll find listed on our website right now, set yourself up for what you need for the coming year without having to worry about a monthly bill. Take advantage of all those great tax incentives and breaks of making sure that you've got your expenses in by the end of the year. You know, taking advantage of the, the tax benefits you have there and having expenses in your business, you are also going to get access to a, an intensive that I host. I've been doing this for, gosh, it's 10 years now. I've been running this program in the industry five, for the last five years with Young Living specifically. And this Become an Icon Personal Branding Intensive is a four-week live intensive where we work together on designing an iconic vision-driven brand for you, where you craft your visionary message and your story, and then we create and launch your brand's content marketing plan, and then develop systems that accelerate your business from day one to the crown, alright? This is going to be something that I will be referencing during the workshop series. So it's not to say you don't have to have this, you don't have to be annual to take advantage of the workshop series, but you will hear me talk about this in the workshop series. And so if you want to have access to all of the content that I might reference for all people, then this is something that you might want to make sure that you have access to. And again, you get access to this right away when, when you get started, you don't have to wait until the new year. We'll have live calls in the new year for the Personal Branding Intensive, but you can get started on the modules for this and get into the community right now. Okay, this is a really cool thing. If you're in the comments and you have been through the Personal Branding Intensive, let folks know what you got out of it so that they know what they can, they might find in there for themselves. And that's not all. I'm actually gonna go over here real quick to our, our website so that you can see all of the amazing things that are being offered while this promo is still running. So this is right here on GetOil-ing.com. You can minimize my face there. Here we go. Our Black Friday promo is going to end as, as of the time of filming, it's going to be tomorrow night. When you get started, you are going to get access to our email marketing mastery course, which I will reference in the workshop, the Brand My Business Workshop, and the Move Your Groups course. These are all going to be referenced in this Marketing Mastery Workshop series that you'll get access to as well. If you're a new monthly customer, you're going to get three months of free two-way texting. You're gonna get three months as well of unlimited vaults and classes, and 200 extra marketing credits per month. That's gonna allow you to send out texts and emails to so many more people without the added expense. If you needed to, you know, level up your, you know, your, your ability to send out messages one month, we do have the ability to actually pay for additional marketing credits, but you're actually going to get those for free. So this goes a long way. New annual customers are going to get a year of free two-way texting, a year of free unlimited vaults and classes, 1,000 extra marketing credits per month, a free domain, or if you already have your own domain and email address. We've got our Personal Branding Intensive, which I've just shared with you, and if you get started at pro or diamond annual, you'll also get a one-on-one strategy and tech consult. Another thing importantly, and if you're here today, I'm sure you've logged into your Get Oil-ing back office in the last six months, but anyone who's logged into your back office in the last six months or refers a new customer during the promo period, it's gonna be entered into a drawing to win a free one-page custom website design and build and an hour session with me. And guys, you get more of these entries when you refer, so make sure you get into your account and share. Let's go look at what that looks like. If we go to Share My Sites, I have a referral link right down here, and that's where you're gonna want to go grab that link and share that with your team so that they can get half off of their second month with Get Oil-ing, and of course, you will share half of that free month with them when they get started, which is pretty, pretty cool. Alright, I'm gonna get into the Q and As here. Please, please make sure if you have questions that they land in the Q and A, because we could lose them in the chat. Alright, Allison said, which training, weekly work session or training and member area has the text opt-in landing page campaign? I want to review that. Allison, that's actually a fairly recent one on our YouTube channel. Let me actually pull that one up real quick and show you. If you go to youtube.com/GetOil-ing. There we go. It's actually this text marketing 101 for Young Living brand partners. You could also go to this little search bar and type in the word text and just look for the most recent one, which is this guy right here. So you'll find the resource bundle and everything from that training right there in the description. Okay, Becca, you have a vendor event this weekend. What system or workshop is the best to use? My time, I want to focus on the new thieves bundle and oils and the nisha combo pack. We also did a training recently. I would head over to our YouTube channel and let's type in event. Excuse me. Here you go, right here. Virtual vendor events or using events. Excuse me. Yeah, so just type in the word events. Also, here we go, updated vendor events. I'm gonna copy this link right here and type it in. So you have that. Okay, can we get access to the icon training if we're on a monthly plan? So this is something that is limited to annual, and that's something that we've had in place for a while. You know, basic is, what is that? It's just, what is like $300 for, for the year or something like that?
Yeah, $319, I think.
Yeah, it is a 30-day money-back guarantee. If you decide that, you know, that Get Oil-ing isn't for you inside of that period of time, then, and you will have access to the, not the live calls, because those start in January. But, but you would have access to the content in there and can kind of get started and, and make sure that that's a fit for you. Alright, I need a partner who is computer literate and tech savvy. Well, we do have, Carol, we, we do have a great Facebook community. Maybe you can see in there if there's anybody that's near to you that might want to connect or can maybe hop on a call with you or something like that. We've got an amazing community of people in that group, and that is, if you just search for Get Oil-ing online on Facebook or Get Oil-ing on Facebook, you can find our group. Alright, Donna says, just showing Get Oil-ing yesterday, excited. I already have a website. How do I merge it with Get Oil-ing? Donna, it's a really good question. So what about, would you be open to maybe raise your hand for me, Donna? Let's chat through this real quick. Donna McLean, if you are able to chat, there we go. Hi, tell me a little bit about the website that you currently have.
Hi, it's, it's pretty dormant, so I'm not worried about losing too much content. And I've been trying to turn my website into a blog, so it sounds like Get Oil-ing is gonna work great with me, but I already pay for my domain, I already have the name, so I just want to make sure I don't lose that.
Yeah, yeah, okay. So what I would do is with your Get Oil-ing account, any of the content that you want to live on, I would transfer that over to Get Oil-ing, and that is gonna be a manual process. So if you have old blog posts and things like that, then you could move them over. And then, and then of course, create any of the pages that you would again want to keep that would have been on your existing site. And then, once that's done, you just get in touch with our team and you say, I want to connect my, my domain, and we can give you all the instructions to do that. And now, you know, your website is still your website, it's just all hosted on your Get Oil-ing platform.
Okay, so I get rid of my GoDaddy account.
They wouldn't be hosting for you anymore. Yeah, we, we would be the host. And then you would just be pointing the name server. So you could, you would still have a GoDaddy account because that's where you've purchased the domain, but, but yeah.
Okay, cool. Great, thank you.
Yeah, absolutely. Welcome. Alright, let's see. You're in here as 2022. Sorry, I don't know your name. I really need help. I've worked on my website, but I'm not sure if it's ready to send out to my groups and how to send them a link. I've been a member since June of this year and really need to feel more comfortable getting it completed or else learn without watching every video. What do I need to do? Alright. 2022, will you raise your hand up for me if you want to talk through this real quick? And we can do that. Alright, so, here we go. It's gotta promote you to a panelist.
Rest.
Hi.
Hi.
Hi, what's your name?
Kiana Leland.
Hi, it's great to have you here. So, so tell me, do you feel like you just want to have a look at your website and, and just get some feedback, or do you feel like it needs something else specifically?
I don't have a clue. I've never done a website before. I always have someone else do it for me. And I'm just, I've had a lot of head trauma, so it's for me to comprehend and do that, but I really want to help my group because it's really disappearing. You know, and I need to get it back up and running. I'm more of a one-on-one face person, not a computer person, so. Yeah, you can see what I did. I don't even know if what I did even works. I don't, because I don't know how a computer works.
Got you, got you. Okay, that's totally fine. How do you spell your first name?
K-I-A-N-N-A-A.
Okay, I found you. Okay, perfect. So let's go take a look, and this would be in your pages. So you've built a page, or no, it doesn't look like that. So let's, let's just go, what have you been working on? I'm gonna share my screen here and we can go take a look real quick.
Okay.
Okay. Alright, so first things first, you've got, okay, step toward financial freedom, got, oh, beautiful, I love it. And so when people put their name and their information in here, they'll be on your prospects list, which is great. If we bypass this, you've got your built-in Get Oil-ing website. Looks good. Okay, so what are you hoping to do with your website first?
Well, I wanted to, the main thing, and I think you're the one who showed me when I signed up, and I don't remember what you showed me, but to send, get a link to my people that want to get started on a business and possibly, you know, join you, but I just want to be able to help them, I guess. I need to learn how to get the link to them and and how did, what's involved, and I, I mean, I'm just totally in the dark.
Okay, well, so since you have a landing page set up on your website, you're probably going to be sharing, like if you're on social media or you're out, you know, via email or in person, you're gonna say, go to my website, right? And you're gonna give them the link?
I wanted to send them like, from understanding a campaign, like a email, I'm trying to understand the campaign, what that's all about. Send them something, give, and then ask those who want to, to write back to me or email back to me, and then I will send them a link. I don't do social media at all. I know a lot of my people do, so. I was just gonna send out one blast to all my group for those who.
And so these, these are people who are not customers?
And not yet. I mean, no, 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 they are young living people. I want to help them build their business, and then I want to do my own, you know, people who aren't in Young Living.
Okay, perfect. So, yeah, so that's, that's great. So what you're gonna want to do is, and I'm actually, for the, for the sake of privacy of, of your people, I'm gonna actually log into a different account here and demonstrate what you'll do, but it'll look the same for you.
Okay.
So let me get into this, this dummy account here. You actually don't need to do anything fancy. Send them to any website. You, you don't need to really do anything except go to your contacts. Go to, if you've uploaded them, you of course do need to have them. Okay, perfect. Okay, and do make sure that they're tagged appropriately so that you know that these aren't your young living people, right? So in order, so if they're tagged when you upload them, then, you know, you can go to filters and you can search for that tag so that you're only sending it to them. Or you could exclude if you have maybe a tag for Young Living or something like that. You can only send this to non-Young Living people, right? Or in this case, if we want to send, you're talking about wanting to send to your customers who might want to build a business, right?
My young living people that might.
Okay, okay, so you've got, then you've uploaded your VO file.
Right.
So then what we would do here is we would, the contact type would be a product customer, right? And then we're going to filter for those people. Here we go. And so we've got our people. We're gonna go to mail. And then we're gonna say, are you looking for a way to get your product for free? Or something like that. And then you say whatever you want to say. If you want to personalize it, you say, you know, there's their name. Say what you want to say. You do have a page on your website. I believe it is going to be my website, whatever your website is, slash opportunity. If you have the opportunity page enabled, you can actually send this link to them. So if we wanted to say, you know, click here to learn more about the Young Living Opportunity. And then we can just highlight click here, click our little link here, and then say whatever your website is, right? So my website slash opportunity. Right? So if we go to, and that your website here is GetOil-ing.com/KianaLeland, and if we go to opportunity, this is also the link that you could share. You could also send them a link to this page right here, or actually it's, which one is it? It's brand-partner is actually the name, sorry. Brand-partner, and the link is right up here. So we're just gonna copy that link and we're gonna paste that in right here. So click here to learn more about the opportunity. I'm here to help you, right? So this, this is gonna go out to all of them, and then basically all you gotta do is if somebody wants this, they're gonna respond to you.
Yeah, and that's, that's the only ones I want to work with is those who want to respond to it, okay?
Yeah, that's really it. So you don't have to build anything. You, you just have to send an email out to the right people.
Okay.
Yeah, actually.
So I go.
Yeah, I would actually make this even simpler, just forget the link, hit reply. And tell me your number one goal or something like that, right? So I, I don't even, don't even worry about a link here, because actually, what you're wanting to do is elicit a response. So don't give them any other options. Just say, you know, hey, are you looking for a way to get your product for free? I'm looking for, you know, five people to mentor this month to make an extra $400. If that's you, just hit reply and let me know.
Okay.
If not, okay. And then you're just, you just send it out, or if you're doing this at 2:00 AM, then schedule it.
Thank you.
Yeah, absolutely. Thanks for coming out and asking, and we look forward to having you on again.
Thanks.
Okay. Krishonda, we came in on an annual plan, but when that expired, we went to monthly. Do we need to go annual again to access the new Mastery Workshop? So you don't have to be an annual for, for the Marketing Mastery Series, no. Okay, so if you are, if you are an active customer, as of December 2nd, 2022, you're going to get access to this live round of, of calls, Heidi. So if you're already a customer, you're good, we're gonna tag you, and then we're gonna make sure that you are able to get access to this. Thanks for your question. Oh, Rebecca, thank you. That means a lot. I am, I'm not a tech native. I didn't grow up on computers like my kid did, so I've learned this platform with you guys over the years, as, as it has grown. Awesome. So if you guys have any more questions, we do have a little bit more time. If you want to look through anything together, the Icon Training Rebecca is going to happen in January. We don't have dates for that just yet. I actually have, I've got some things up in the air with family and thank God, my, my grandmother. thank God my, my grandmothers are still with us, but I've, I've got to help one of them out, uh, here at the end of the year, going into January, uh, with some medical stuff. And so that might make my schedule a little funny depending on how things go. Uh, so we don't have dates for that just yet, but we hope to, uh, very soon, uh, you will get those dates here in the next couple of weeks. Um, the marketing, uh, yes, the, the marketing mastery series, these workshops will begin in January. So we'll have one per month. Uh, we'll do them 30 days apart, uh, and we'll be active in this group together that will be adding you to that, uh, that we can all, uh, kind of engage in and you know, communicate and all that kind of good stuff. So good questions. What else? What else? Do we have access to the marketing mastery workshops before the live session? Yes, Brandy. Yeah. Um, yeah, we'll be letting you know about that. We will have, uh, like just some basic, um, you know, here's some videos. Here are some reference materials. Here are the things that you might want to be using and preparing, because basically what I'd like for you to do is to go through those and start getting these things in place. And then we get onto the workshop together to really kind of Q and A what you've been doing so that we can get it right. So you're going to get the basics of what should be in the system, how you should be spending your time, what resources you want to have in place and game plans for getting them in place if you don't already. Those are going to be delivered to you in more of a course format. And then, uh, we'll actually kind of be working on live, uh, implementation together, uh, during that workshop so that we can really kind of break through any of the barriers. Make sure we've really mastered, uh, those concepts. Uh, Bertha, the, um, this mastery series of workshops, there is no added, uh, charge for that. If you are a good oiling customer, uh, by tomorrow, you're going to have access to this. We want to give you everything you need to make this work beautifully for you. Uh, so that, that is, uh, that is our gift to you. Happy holidays, y'all. It's December. It's more a carry season. All right. Oh, we appreciate you. Awesome. Does anybody else have a, um, a request for live review or working on, uh, your, your systems, your website, your approach? Are you just getting started with get oiling and you want to see how something is done or where to look first? Or what training should I look at? Cause there's a lot. Um, definitely speak now and we can get that figured out together. Otherwise, uh, let's, let's get busy guys with, um, getting started if you haven't already, getting in touch with our team and that support at good oiling.com. If you are ready to upgrade or renew an annual plan, get into the, um, the personal branding intensive, uh, which is going to be really important content for you in launching your brand in the coming year. And, uh, let's see, is there training on onboarding with a campaign? Sure there is, but I don't remember where it is. Yeah, actually let's, let's go take a look at that. We have one that's already done for you that you don't have to worry about writing, but you can, of course, uh, make it your own. So if we go to campaigns, just go to the last page that you have. And if you are subscribed to any of our content partners, you may have 10 pages like I do here. Uh, so here we go. Here's USA new customers. I know you're based here in the U S, uh, but we also have new members. If you want to type in the word members here. Actually, I'm just going to type in the word new and see what comes up. Uh, there's actually, there's a lot of partner content. Here we can go to the second page and we can find it. So new member resources. No, it's different. Here we go. There we go. It starts with Australian new members, Canada new members, uh, Canada new members, PSK, global new members. Singapore new members, US new members. So, um, these are all campaigns. No, this is not. So there is a lot of grow workspace content that you just saw, but all this stuff that I'm showing you right now, you see where it says created by get oiling? That's yours. That's in your system, whether you're started with us at seed for $7 a month, or you've got one of our premium plans and you're really running your business with us. So, um, this is going to be, uh, where you want to look. Uh, all of these creative bike at oiling. So for your USA new customers, you can actually go in here and you can see what's in all of these. They're all pre-written and you can send them out as you, right? You also have the ability to make a copy of this and tweak it to your liking. And so you, now you have a base to work from and you've made it your own. And then of course you can apply that to your contacts. Let's see. Oh, awesome. Yeah. You got one from modern companion. She's got really great stuff. Is the icon training once a month or weekly? So during the intensive, it is, uh, weekly Rebecca. Rebecca says, I want to offer a challenge signup at my vendor event with a purchase. What should I set up a landing page for signup and campaign? Anything else? Rebecca, uh, will you raise your hand? I'll bring you out to chat. Hello.
Hello.
All right. So tell me about the challenge that you're thinking about offering.
Uh, well, what I wanted to do is when someone gets the bundle, I wanted to offer a challenge for, um, wellness reset for their home and for themselves. And then you're going to need to order, uh, have the product on hand to do it. I wouldn't start it, obviously it's after the holidays.
Okay. Where do you plan on hosting the content for that challenge?
In a private Facebook community.
Okay. Awesome. So basically what you're going to want to do is, um, send them a campaign, uh, when they get started, right? And that campaign, uh, if, if they sign up, that's going to give them access to the Facebook group. You're probably going to want to have an automation. No, you're definitely going to want to have an automation attached. Uh, if you ever do a vendor event, you should have an automation attached to whatever you're using to sign people up so that you remember to follow up. And that is something that I talk about in the training that I, I showed that was on our YouTube channel earlier. On our, our more recent vendor event one. So, uh, the follow-up plan that you attach with the automation is going to remind you, uh, to, uh, see if they've joined the Facebook group and maybe to reach out to them one-on-one, uh, to make sure that they've joined, um, and then to maybe initiate that conversation, uh, about getting their products. Uh, so the first email that you send to them should say, here's where you join the Facebook group. Uh, and then you should also say, you know, there are products, uh, that you're going to want to have in place for this. If you'd like my help in figuring out the best ones for you, if you want to talk to them directly, which is a good idea, uh, then you know, tell them to hit reply. Uh, and then of course, if you're planning on putting the information about the products in the Facebook group, then just be focusing on pointing to the Facebook group and whatever emails that you send. I would encourage you to maybe send, you know, three or four that introduce what's going to happen in the challenge, encourage them to go over to the Facebook group. Uh, remind them about all the fun things that are happening in the Facebook group. Just basically count on them not necessarily paying attention uh, or being ready to make that commitment to go over to Facebook right now and, and join. Uh, so definitely have three or four emails that go out in that campaign that, that they, they get after they, um, sign up at your live event. And then have a follow-up plan for you to go back and initiate conversations and help move them toward the group. And then of course, if all the contents in the group, then that's really the extent of what you need to create and get oiling.
Okay. So that when you say automation attached, you're talking about a follow-up plan for myself. There's also the automated email campaign.
Right. Yeah. So. Yeah, yeah. And I do get into that in, in the new, um, the newer training on, um, on vendor events. That's, that's on our YouTube channel. Yeah. Basically you're, the automation can apply the campaign and the follow-up plan at the same time. Uh, and that's what I would do is, you know, just, um, you're probably going to be using the page in kiosk mode unless you're using like a QR code, in which case have it go to a confirmation page, um, after they sign up. But then put no campaign, uh, as the setting on the page itself, and then attach the automation that applies the campaign and the follow-up plan and the tags and all that kind of stuff.
Okay. I, I knew what you got in detail in that the YouTube training for vendor. Okay. All right. Yeah. All right. Thank you so much.
Yeah, absolutely. Good luck. It sounds fun.
Yeah. Thank you.
Okay. I think, okay. So there was a question as well. I think I saw in the comments kit, like get to everything and scroll and speak to you guys at the same time, but, um, will the workshop and the, um, personal branding intensive be happening at the same time? Yes and no. Um, you will have access to the personal branding intensive and you can start going through the content that's in there. And I highly recommend any downtime that you have. If you plan on, on really getting into this and launching yourself in the new year, try to take some of your downtime this month, wherever it's available to start going through the content and the personal branding intensive, start doing some of the homework that's in there. You're going to be better off by having done the work first so that you can be helped with what you've created when you show up on the live call, right? So the live call series where you're basically going to receive coaching and guidance and feedback on what you've been doing. Those things will be happening weekly and they'll start in January. Again, unfortunately I don't have an exact date for you on that start just yet. Uh, but you're going to have the same opportunity inside of the, uh, marketing mastery workshop, um, vault as well. You're going to be able to, um, you know, again, it's, these are small steps. The personal branding intensive really is intended to be a personal growth exercise. Deep dive into who you are, why you do what you do, why that matters, how you talk about why that matters, who you say it to, and then how you strategically spend your time so that that message gets out to the world and attracts your tribe, right? If we look at this, um, if we look at this the right way, we're basically spending four weeks with a, you know, an hour a day. This is a little bit more than you might already be spending an hour a day for four weeks. We're going to be digging in to who we are. And again, if you can spend some reflective time, this, you know, winter season in December, uh, doing some of that deep work before we go into those live calls. You are going to make your participation in the mastery workshop series a bit easier because you'll have this kind of figured out. But here's a good thing you need to know. When you get into the marketing mastery workshop series, we're only going to be focusing on one system at a time. And I'm not going to say, go do the whole personal branding intensive, go do the whole move your groups off Facebook course. I'm going to say for this system to execute this thing, here's the module, here's the lesson, here's the exercise. We're going to break, that's the whole point of the ma, the marketing mastery workshop series is that we're going to gain mastery by doing enough of the right things. And the right things don't actually take a ton of time, right? We can, we can set time aside to do bigger projects. But typically, we're just going to go with this stuff one bite at a time, right? And, and figure out these systems and get them into working order. So I promise it's not going to be too overwhelming. You don't have to do everything. Don't look at course completion as being the goal, especially if we're getting into the marketing mastery workshop series. Work on one system at a time and we'll be doing that together and you'll be fine. All right. Great questions, you guys. I think I've got all of them answered. We will be back next week. I hope you guys have the best week. And I hope you share with somebody today that's on your team who would benefit from this. The opportunity to get their own get oiling system. It's going to get you another entry, uh, into our drawing. And then of course they can join you and be a partner with you in this marketing mastery workshop series that's launching next year. So you guys have a fantastic week and we will see you next Thursday. Bye, everybody.